See if I can do this, ready? There's the flag and you'll notice the new TV hanging up there, too. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Looks good.
Good.
Good, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic. Which is one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. As I said, you can see the the new TV over there. I'm gonna hopefully at the end of the meeting, I'll take a moment and kind of highlight some of the safety and security updates that have happened in town hall for everyone. I know we've had a lot of visitors here recently, but I certainly will also ask the administrator to point out a couple that if I miss any there. But we are off to our regular council meeting on Zoom and I'm going to defer Mr. Mr. Clerk, if you could start us on our way.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Does Tim motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tony, second.
So Tim made the motion to approve, Tony made the second. And just a moment, I probably should have said that we have full attendance with, I'm just gonna go how we have it on the Zoom window at the moment. Mary Porella, Aaron Lay, Tim Sweeney and Tony Texera in full attendance here. So we had a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I vote aye, thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A, 1, 2 and 3.
Tim, I motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Mary.
Tim made the motion, Mary made the second, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, thank you.
The the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is item B1, and this is an advertised public hearing to consider an amendment to the zone use map under the zoning ordinance for change of zone map request for 500 Wood Street assesses plat 29 lot 1, including units 10, 21 and 30, and change from zone to urban rehab LDP with conditions to urban rehab LDP with modified conditions. This is the second reading for an adoption in addition to the advertised public hearing.
So I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Before I do that, just a couple of quick things. If you've ever been to a council meeting, you've heard us say, is anyone in favor? And we ask it three times, then anyone against? And we ask that three times. I am going to do that this time, but you're gonna see, I'm gonna give a lot more time for response. And then just a couple of more seconds at the end, just in case someone is interested in weighing in. Chris Vitale, before I open the public hearing, could you remind everyone if they called in? Or if they've using the Zoom app, how to raise their hand, if you will?
Sure, so if you're calling in, you can mute yourself by pressing star six on your phone. If you don't have a smart device, or if you do have an iPhone, it has the built in mute feature. And if you want to use the raise hand feature to indicate that you would like to speak, you can press star nine on your phone. If you are signing in through the Zoom app, you can find the raise hand feature under the participants tab at the bottom of your screen if you hover over the video portion.
So again, we're gonna go a little bit slower than we usually do. We have a couple of public hearings this evening. Want to give everybody the opportunity to speak if they so choose to. So I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? And I already see a hand risen, which is Rick Land, the receiver. Rick, good evening, how are you?
I am doing well, how are you all doing this evening?
Good, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly, my name is Richard Land. My address is care of Chase Rottenberg and Friedman, which is my firm. It's One Park Row, Suite 300, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903.
Thanks, Rick. Could you please refresh everyone's memory? This has been on the agenda before a bit. We continued it a few times to make sure we had everything all set. Could you remind everybody why this is being proposed as a change? What the purpose is behind it and why you are in favor of it?
Certainly, and I appreciate everybody's work on this and patience while we tried to get everything lined up for this property. So for those of you who aren't familiar with it, 500 Wood Street is the former Kaiser plant. I'm sure you are all familiar with it. And it is a series of buildings, industrial buildings, some of which were converted to productive use many years ago and have been taken out of the condominium complex. And there are several buildings, namely buildings 1, 2 and 3, which were sold to a business called Mosaic, business development, business, community business development. And I might have gotten that name wrong because there's a couple of different Mosaicos. But I am the receiver of that entity. And I, as receiver, own those three buildings consisting of several condominium units, including the ones that were referenced in this resolution. The reason we need this change is we have marketed this property for sale. Mr. Britto, Joseph Britto, who most of you are probably familiar with, is a very active and prominent member of the Bristol community, made the successful offer for the property. That offer was approved by the Superior Court and it had one, several conditions, but one significant condition that this resolution addresses specifically that building 3, consisting of those named condominium units, be converted for senior living, 55 and older living. And previously, the property was zoned commercial and light industrial only. So this change was a necessary change in order for me to be able to convey the property to Mr. Britto and satisfy the condition of the purchase and sale agreement. The reason for continuing this matter over the course of several months now was primarily to be able to work out arrangements with the other condominium owners who likewise have an interest in how this property is used. And since this was originally brought before the council, we have worked together cooperatively with Mr. Britto and his team, as well as the other condominium owners, to come to an agreement. That agreement was signed, I believe it was last week that we finalized it. And specifically, that agreement does incorporate this change that is before the council this evening, verbatim. And so the other condominium owners, and perhaps they've called in, perhaps not, but they are in agreement with this change. There were other concessions made relative to the condominium, all positive specifically how certain open or previously common areas are being re-designated for limited use, primarily for parking and passage of vehicles to make sure that the entire complex can be used in a productive way by all the condominium owners. I view this change as a very positive development for the Mosaic condominium complex, but also for the community. Mr. Britto has repeatedly expressed and consistently maintained that he is working on making significant improvements to this development for the benefit of the community as a whole. And already, even though he has not closed on the property, he has already contributed a significant amount of time and effort to improve the property, to make sure that it is moving in the right direction. And I do think it's gonna be a benefit for the community in the long term. So naturally, I support this. I've requested it, so of course I support it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
So I'm gonna stop and ask, I'd ask the council, do you have any questions for Rick Land? And it's okay, we can come back to Rick if there's questions that pop up. Can I give everybody a moment? Okay, Mike Ursillo, there's Mr. Solicitor, anything that you wanted to add? I thought that was well done.
I, as a matter of fact, Rick, I don't think you missed anything, especially given the history and what brought us here today and the good news about how everyone in the condo association is happy with this. I think, Mr. Chairman, we should go to Diane Williamson, who will bring you through the actual change.
So I know that we're in the, I agree with you. Diane, if you could kind of share those substantive and factual changes? Because we're in the public hearing, I want to make sure that if you are for or against, do you still feel comfortable to share those thoughts? But please, I agree with this listener.
Thank you, good evening. This is Diane Williamson, the Director of Community Development. You also have in your packets a memorandum from the planning board, who also made recommendations to you and they were favorable recommendations. And I still concur that that we are in support of this. As was explained, this was zoned manufacturing originally. In 2014, to give the Mosaic Business Community Development Corporation some more flexibility in uses on the property, the town rezoned it to a rehab LDP, conditioned on a list of certain uses, which were in the ordinance predominantly industrial and some percentage commercial. I believe it was 60% industrial, 40% commercial. As Mr. Land explained, with the current status in receivership and the desire to have more success with this property, the proposal that you have now is to revise the conditions, rescinding the conditions from the 2014 rezoning and replace them with conditions that you have in your memo, which are basically to allow uses, any use in the zoning, except those that are prohibited on the listing. And it was sort of the reverse of what we did before where we listed out the uses that we wanted. Now we're saying everything's wanted unless we've specifically prohibited them. And those prohibited uses are either not appropriate for that industrial or property or neighborhood, or they're just not allowed in any zone. So there was agreement that they should be eliminated from uses that would be allowed. The other change from the conditions in 2014 was recommended for residential in building group 3 only, for the age restricted units, up to 120 units, residential units. And the last revision was, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance in this rehab LDP zone that required a 10% allocation for public or institutional use. And that goes back to the original master planning that was done with the Kaiser Mill when it first, when it first closed. And there was a desire to see more of a mix with some public or institutional. The recommendation now is that that not be applicable to this property. So that would be not a use that we would need to see happen there. And I think, I think that's it, just the other comments is, you know, this is just a zone change. So when it goes forward with redevelopment, it would need planning board and historic approvals. I just wanted to make you aware of that also.
Diane, could you, I know it's gonna be a little bit difficult, but could you share with the public generally, what are we talking about? When we say building 3, I know the council knows, I know you know, and the town knows. But if we could share with the public, how would you explain that kind of the middle of the property? How would you explain it?
Yes. So it's, when you go into the, when you go into the industrial part from Wood Street, it's the furthest back building. So the first building you'd see is the building that everybody sees on the street, which is the White Mill Building, right on the sidewalk. And then as you go back a bit more to the east, you see the brick building with the smoke stack. And then further to the east beyond both of those is building group 3.
Okay.
I, I, I hope that's clear to everybody.
It's very difficult with words. I know I could pull up a map, but it's, I just wanted to make it clear to people that it's not on the closest to Wood Street portion of the property or closest to Shaw's Lane or Franklin. It's kind of middle property area, so, or at least that's my, that's the way I would explain it. So anything else, but I want to continue with hearing public comment. Anything else that you wanted to add, Diane?
Not at this time, no. That, just to, I will say though, that back to the planning boards memo, there is a finding that is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the general purposes of zoning. And that's all part of their recommendation to you as well.
Perfect, okay. Thank you, Diane. Okay, so I'm gonna ask again, is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Again, I'm gonna give it an extra moment here. And Chris Vitale, I know that you're watching hands raised, too. Make sure I'm not missing one. Okay, just another count here, okay. So is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Again, I'm gonna give it another count here, just to give people the opportunity to make sure they know how to use the program. Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
Just gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion to close the public hearing, Tony made the second, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We've now closed the public hearing. My colleagues, have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. Quick, I raise my hand that way. I just wanted to thank everyone. First of all, this has been a long time in coming, a lot of hard work on a lot of people's part, a lot of Rick and, and Mike and everyone for keeping at it and keeping the best interest of Bristol. I'm very happy that Joe Britto is, was a successful bidder, a local person. And I think that it's something that really needs to be taken, addressed. Usually we have, I think, a difficult time giving up manufacturing land or industrial land. But in this case, we really don't have a lot of choices. And I think the use of senior housing is much needed in Bristol as well.
Agreed.
Happy about that. And the last comment I wanted to say, Diane, when you were talking about, when Diane was talking about the list of what's not allowed, I wouldn't want it, or what's allowed unless it's prohibited. I don't want anybody to think that anything could go there because there is a pretty long list of prohibited items. So very long list, as a matter of fact. So any concerns about something horrible is on the list prohibited probably for most places in Bristol. So I just want to thank everyone and I want to wish Joe Britto and everyone the best success in getting this. I want to look forward to seeing the change at that location. Because this has been years and years and years and years in the making. So thank you all, and our administrator and our chairman, everyone else that's worked on it.
It was well put, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay speaking. I just wanted to follow up on Mary's remarks, too. I remember this issue popped up a couple, well, it wasn't even two years ago. And, you know, my concern back then was the difficulty of getting anything like this done. And, you know, to see that it got done in the time that it was is just truly remarkable. And, and so just want to say thank you to everybody for working with the condo owners and everything like that. And I think this will be a good spot for that senior living, as Councilwoman Porella had said. Thank you.
Tim?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say, Councilman Lay and Councilwoman Porella, you did it well said. I think this is gonna be a positive change for the community. And with that, I'd like to make, make a motion to adopt the second reading, approve the second reading for adoption.
Tim? Mike Ursillo speaking, could you add to your motion that you incorporate the recommendations of the planning board as to findings of fact and consistency with comprehensive plan? All is set for and delineated in their memo dated December 12, 2019.
So moved.
Tony, second.
Mike, it's like you were in my brain there, I was gonna say exactly the same thing, not. Thank you, thank you for that clarity. So we have a motion from Tim and a second from Tony. I'd also like to just add real quick, well put, Mary, I think that was most perfect and Aaron. This is wonderful to see it move forward. I should say that this is, there's a couple of things left. The remediation, the Brownfield site closure for the parking lot, it's moving forward. And completion of a lease agreement that needs to be clarified and just finalized. But we're moving in the absolute right direction, it seems like we'll be in an end shortly. So unless there's anything else, we had a motion and a second to approve, Tim?
Aye.
May I, Mr. Chairman, before we go on?
Of course, Tony.
No, I have to concur, having been one that been on both sides of the issue, I have to agree thoroughly with all of you that this is long coming and certainly is very appreciated, all the efforts made by all of you to make sure that this scheme to fruition.
Well put. So I had a vote of approval from Tim, Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye, so we are, motion passes, thank you and good luck.
Thank you all very much. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The next item on this evening's agenda is item B2. And this considers the petition of Kenneth Souza, Doing Business as All Sport Collectibles, 576 Medicom Avenue, Unit 18. He has a request for a junk and secondhand license. The, as you know, that, that is kind of a broad term. This is for a, a sports collectibles establishment. You have recommendations provided by the, by the town administrator and chief of police and also the town administrator and fire chief.
So this is also a public hearing? So I'm gonna open up to the public, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Again, I'll be looking for hands raised and Chris, I will ask you also to look for that. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Gonna give it an extra moment, just in case. Is Kenneth Souza on the call? I do not see his name in the list, that doesn't mean he's not here, though. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there anyone here to speak against?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna give it just an extra moment, if I may, just in case. Okay, Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Jump, jumping too fast there. Motion to close the public hearing.
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion to close, Tony made the second, is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow for the secondhand, the permit or the license to do junk and secondhand dealers license. And I wish him well in Bristol, I've seen his store on Market Street. I've never been in, but I've seen it, so I wish him well in Bristol.
Tony, Tony, second, with a comment. I actually, I believe Foxy Marshall had a sports store there at one time in the same location.
Great history. Is there any other discussion? I'm also gonna assume that the motion included the recommend, to follow the recommendations from the police chief, town administrator and fire chief. We always do, but it's worth the record. Okay, so we had a motion and a second, Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries, as said by all, good luck with the new score.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, this is your, your third public hearing. This considers the petition of Richard Corenti for WKOCLC, Doing Business as the Portside Tavern, 444 Thane Street, request for the opportunity to expand his licensed premises. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief and also the town administrator and chief of police. And you also have correspondence room, a budding property owner Cindy Daniels and Giulio Amaro at 412 Thane Street, who have questions and concerns regarding the portside application.
Excellent, so again, we've gone through this twice already. This is, of course, a public hearing. I'm gonna open it up for a public comment and ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor? And I know that Richard Corenti is on the call, I saw him there, I can see his name. And I'm gonna, again, we'll give it a moment here, but is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? And I'm going to assume, I shouldn't assume, but I'm gonna assume.
Hello?
Hello, Rich, it's, I'm gonna, I'm asking for anyone here to speak in favor and I'm assuming you'd be speaking in favor, so go ahead. And oh, Rick, before.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, before you start, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Richie Corenti and the restaurant address is 444 Thane Street. My house address is 15 Burndale Circle, both in Bristol.
So you are obviously the applicant, you're also speaking in favor. Could you take a moment and explain to everyone what's being requested, what you're hoping to do?
Hello? Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry, this is my first time doing this, this is my, my, my first Zoom experience, but um.
No problem, go ahead, take your time.
So because of the, the new rules that the governor laid, the governor, governor laid out for us, I can only see tables eight feet apart, which would only leave me with about four tables for the whole restaurant. And I'm trying to get my staff of 35 back to work as soon as possible. So what I did was I put up some dividers on my front patio, which enabled me to put two extra tables out there. Now I have six tables out there. And I'd like to extend my, my retail license to the side of my building, which I have roped off right now. I can fit five more small tables or so. And it gives me about 11 tables to work with, which, you know, hopefully she doesn't keep this up much longer, but could definitely help me get more of us back to work.
Rich, could you answer a couple of questions for us? I know I have a couple and maybe my colleagues do, too. Your current, your current close time for the exterior is, what is it stated and what is actual?
So I don't have a current close time for the outside. I typically only really serve dinner out there, there's no bar or anything out there. But patrons have been allowed to come out here afterwards and have a drink or have a smoke or, or little privacy. It hasn't been an issue in the first year that I've been open. But we really just serve dinner out here until about nine and then typically there's nobody out here after like 10.
Okay. Thank you. Opened up my colleagues, what questions do you have? Mary?
I just had a quick question. So I had seen Rick walking around before.
One second, one sec, I'm going to, Rich just muted, so go ahead and I'll unmute him once you're done.
Okay.
Sorry.
So I think, I mean, I'm all in favor of doing, surprising probably to him because I gave him a hard time last year about something else. But I'm very happy to, to see, you know, we have to do what we can to help all the businesses and all the businesses, period, and the restaurants. And it's a lot of restrictions and we're all living in this new, this new world. Wouldn't the close time and some of that be addressed? This may be more to you, Mr. Chairman. Later on in the agenda, we have the permit allowing anybody to do sort of certain things. Wouldn't this be, I think the close time, if I'm correct, is 10 o'clock?
That's my belief also, I guess where I was, it's, so I'm kind of answering the question, I'm sorry. But the, my question had more to, is that I talked to Rich prior to this meeting and I was asking him what normally happens there. And he had shared with me that, that I believe 10 o'clock, if my memory is correct. And it sounds like you've, you've looked this up already. But I was wondering, does that, is that what typically happens out there most of the time or is it close earlier? But you are correct, is that the executive order, which Councilman Porella is mentioning, there's an agenda item later on that speaks to the executive order from the governor and then the local executive order from the administrator, that if you currently have a sidewalk use permit outdoor, then, and you ask for an expansion, then that expansion would be subject to whatever your close time is currently. So you are correct, and at least that's my understanding. And, and Mr. Solicitor, please correct me if I'm wrong there, but it would be 10 o'clock.
You're correct.
Okay. And then if you are asking, and we'll get to that a little bit later, but I think it's appropriate to clarify, is that if you are, don't have it currently and you're looking to take advantage of that for some sidewalk use that you don't currently have, then it would be sunset, if my memory is, and I'd have to look at that again, but, but.
Yes, you're correct.
Did I miss anything there? Does that answer the question, Mary?
Yes, and one other quick question. Some of the questions that were in the memo from Cynthia Daniels, in terms of Porter Johns petitions between tables, I mean, some of that, I think we can assume what the answers are, but I really am not clear on what the governor's rules are in terms of using the restaurants, in the restaurants, while people are seated outside. Does anyone know?
So I'm gonna lean on, actually, Chris has just raised his hand, Chris Vitale, could you give us some clarity on that?
Yeah, so as of right now, having people go into the restaurants to use the facilities, it's strictly for, if you're picking up an order and obviously. it's strictly for, if you're picking up an order, and obviously, inside those restaurants, the spacing is six feet. I know that the guidance, they do have general guidance out in regards to sanitation and outdoor facilities and how this would work for outdoor dining. We have that information available on our COVID-19 page on the website. And, you know, certainly, we also have that temporary outdoor dining permit that's live right now as well.
So Chris, could you speak to that specifically? So if I, let's say that this, that we say yes to this petition, and we grant the use or the additional use, if I am sitting outside and I want to use the bathroom, I cannot go inside the facilities, is that what you just said?
So the state hasn't put out definitive language that says having customers go in and out for the facilities. I think as a practice, they've only, what they've shared is limit the amount of customers inside to just picking up. So I'm going out and extending to say that I'm interpreting that as, I, I believe that this would restrict using bathroom facilities inside the restaurants in the interim. I don't know what that's going to look like here in a couple of weeks in phase two.
I'll tell you what, I, Mr. Administrator, it looks like you can add some light to this.
Yeah, I think we got to stay tuned, and the regulations and guidance have been somewhat growing every day as far as what's allowed. And I just find it very hard to accept that we're going to be providing food and beverage to people without a facility. I know there's guidance to buildings on cleaning plans, whether it be an hourly, like we do here at Town Hall. We have a check sheet that our custodian cleans the restrooms, countertops, supposed to be hourly. I would stay tuned. There is a business guideline. I just didn't look that up for restaurants. Quite frankly, I didn't look that up, but locally here, I think we would certainly advocate on behalf of the businesses to provide sanitary facilities if you're going to be serving food and beverage. So I, I, I don't, I don't, I, that would be my position, and that would be my advocacy to provide the facilities on premise and make sure that they have a cleaning plan and they follow the business guidelines on restrooms.
I just wanted to follow up, if I may, and I'm glad to hear that because I've seen in relation to some of the issues, like the beaches, for example, where they have closed the restrooms but open porta johns. It's no sense to me at all. I mean, even sounds worse for germs and for contamination. So I would think that that would, we would have to do that. I don't know if they had finalized. At some point, they were talking about having people only be allowed to sit at the restaurant tables for a certain amount of time. Do you know if they continued with that, or is that no longer an issue?
They're recommending two-hour time limits.
That was Rich Corenti.
Okay, yes, right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. So Chief Lynch, you had your hand raised.
Yes, I just was doing a quick search of phase one guidelines for restaurants. If I could make a recommendation that we, if you do decide to approve, that it would be in accordance with all of the phase one guidelines for restaurants. I do think you can go to the bathroom. All of the tables and chairs need to be moved out so there's proper entrance and egress to use restroom facilities. And I do think it says that it can't be walk-ins. It has to be a reservation through an app or some type of a phone-in for those outdoor seating. So to address all of those issues, they are all identified in the phase one breakdown that the governor has put on reopening ri.com.
That's an excellent recommendation. Thank you. Chris?
And just to add to that, as part of that phase one guidance that's been put out by the state, they do call for sanitation stations outside next to the outdoor dining. So that's not restroom facilities, but that is half of it, and making sure that people are able to wash their hands and whatnot before and after the meals.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay. Is there any other questions for the applicant? Because I want to continue with the public hearing. Certainly, I look to my colleagues. Any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, I'm going to, just an extra moment. I don't see anything. And Chris, please feel free to share if you see something. Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there anyone here to speak against? Again, I'm going to give it an extra count here, if you would, everyone. Give everyone the opportunity if they are having technical issues. Seeing none, Tim, you look like you were going to make a motion.
I was. Chairman Tim, gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is, was there a second?
Tony, second.
Okay, there was a motion from Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearings. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Making a motion to approve the expansion.
I just, I want to take a vote, please, just to close the public hearing.
Oh, aye. I apologize.
Not at all, not at all. Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Back to you, Tim.
Let the cat out of the bag there, but motion to approve the expansion of the license premise and in accordance with phase one guidelines for restaurants and with sanitation outside.
And with all recommendations, correct?
And with all, based on all the positive recommendations.
Excellent.
Second.
Mary, so Tim made the motion, Mary seconded. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Good luck, Rich. And we, we hope you the best with all of our businesses, too. Wish you the best, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. The next item is, is agenda item C1, and this is the first reading of ordinance 2020-02. This is to establish a 20 mile per hour speed limit on Perry Street. You have a memo from the solicitor explaining the reason for the ordinance and a recommendation provided by the town administrator.
So, Mr. Solicitor, could you take just a quick moment? This is just first reading, so there's no dialogue tonight, but I thought it important to talk about why we're proposing this.
Sure. As it turns out, there is not an ordinance in place with regard to a speed limit on Perry Street. And as you all know, it's, there's not an ordinance in place. The default is 25 miles per hour. And based upon reports from the police department, the chief, the recommendation is to, to lower that, that 25 is just a bit too fast for that street. We just want to be able to put the ordinance in place so that it becomes enforceable at 20.
Okay. Okay. And what's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, move to consider this the first reading.
Second. Tim?
Tony made the motion. Tim made the second for first reading. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item C2, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, this is also a first reading of a new ordinance, 2020-03. This is an amendment to the town code to create a no parking area on Franklin Street. The council will recall that there was previous discussions regarding this. The, the new distance of the no parking area, which, which abuts the elder care parking lot, is more in line with, with what is apparently practical as compared to the earlier ordinance.
So this, in essence, extends that no parking area to make a clearer, well, an easier exit from that parking lot. Or so it's a better visibility, I guess, would be the way to put that simply. What's this council's pleasure?
This is Tim. I make a motion to approve the first reading.
This is Eric, second.
So Tim made the motion, Aaron seconded it for first reading. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And also vote aye. Thank you.
Item C3, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, another first reading of a new ordinance. This is ordinance 2020-04. There was some discussion about this earlier. This would be to allow a certain expansion of the dining area and outside dining areas for local restaurants based upon the, the current situation.
Again, Mr. Solicitor, could you take a moment? I know this is a, honestly, hats off, this is a very proactive approach to this, but could you kind of just really quickly explain what it is and when it expires? Because I think that's also important.
Sure. So as you're aware, we are operating under an emergency order that's been signed by Steve Contenti, his town administrator, and has been ratified by the town council. That power comes from the governor in her emergency orders. At some point between now and late fall, most likely those emergency orders and the power derived from them is going to expire. So what this is going to do is to ensure that all of the things that we're allowing in the emergency order with regard to restaurants will stay in place through the fall so that the restaurant owners know that if they make it, basically put money out, go through expenses to make this happen, they need some stability, they, they need some assurance that it's not going to go away when the emergency order goes away. So this is going to ensure and give them that stability and that assurance that they'll be able to continue to have the outdoor dining as they are today. And the ordinance will expire six months from its adoption, which, if it's adopted at your next meeting, will bring it into November. By then, it'll probably be difficult to eat outside. If things are not working again next spring, you can look at it again. Let's hope that's not the case. But this will at least ensure for the coming season that we have stability.
Perfect. Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion to consider this first reading. This is Tony.
Oh, this is Mary, second.
Tony made the motion, Mary seconded. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is item D2, and this considers the petition of Julie Leonardo doing business as Jules Ice Cream at 446 B Thane Street. The petitioner requests council consideration for a viddling license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and the town administrator and the chief of police.
This is Tony. Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
So there's a, Tony made the motion, Tim seconded it for approval. Is Julie on the call?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Hi, Julie. This is the part of the show where you get 30 seconds of a commercial, so the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Awesome, yes. So my name is Julie Leonardo. I am now the owner of Jules Ice Cream, which was in place of the Daily Scoop right on Thane's. So we're doing a little bit of remodeling, and I'm taking over, and I'm super excited to get open as soon as possible, so that's in the works. And I hope everybody comes and gets an ice cream going for me.
Black raspberry with sprinkles. That's my favorite.
Yeah, so I appreciate everybody, and I, that's, that's the exciting news of my commercial.
Perfect. All right.
Very popular spot in, in town. I'm sure you're going to do very well. A lot of, a lot of people replace dinner with ice cream.
Yep, as will I for the next two years of my life, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye, and good luck.
Tony?
Aye, looking forward for a nice scoop sometime.
Yes, so the town says congratulations and good luck. So I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Good luck.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is item D3, and this is from the, the earlier petitioner, All Sports Collectibles, requesting council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and town administrator and chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, it's Tim. Based on all the positive recommendations, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion, Tony seconded. To approves, or any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Oh, the, the pictures changed there. Where did Aaron go?
He's down at the bottom.
He moved to the right. I'm sorry, I was going across.
He's in the same place for my thing. Isn't that weird?
Really?
So Aaron, I heard a aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Mary, I already asked you. See, everything got moved, and I, look at how easily I can get. Oh, that's kind of scary.
Thinking about ice creams.
Yes, what it was. Tony?
Aye.
Okay, and I also vote aye. So motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is item E1, and this is the annual renewal of the sidewalk use license. For this year, you have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, code compliance coordinator, and public works director, and also chief of police, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, based on all the positive recommendations, I also make a motion to approve the sidewalk use license renewals for 2021.
Tony, second.
So Tim made the motion, Tony made the second to approve. Is there any discussion? All right, so I'm not going to get messed up. I'm going to go, Tim? Mary?
Yeah, aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
And item E2, similarly, the sidewalk alcohol license renewals for 2021. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, public works director, and chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, it's Tim. Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve the sidewalk alcohol license renewals for 202021.
Okay, so Tim made the motion, Mary made the second to approve the sidewalk licenses. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have one appointment to consider this evening. This is item G1A for the Capitol Project Commission. This is with term to expire in May of 2025. You have the application for reappointment from Denise Ashola, currently serving at 50 Brooks Farm Drive, and new applicant Charles Kalner of 10 Hope Street.
Could I, I just have a question.
Certainly. Go ahead, Mary.
I don't have any, any issue. I just had a quick question about Denise. Is this, this isn't one of these boards, didn't she just get appointed the last meeting to the board of canvassers? Is there any problem with her being on both, or?
There doesn't seem to be any, any restriction on holding more than one office in those two boards.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion to appoint Denise, or reappoint Denise.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
So Tony made the motion to appoint, Tim seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Denise, for your service. And thank you, Charles, for applying.
The next item is item H1, and this is from the administrator. It is a draft lease for the Bristol State House Foundation.
So I had asked for this to be continued, and I'm certainly going to ask the, Mr. Administrator to weigh in here just a moment. But I had asked this to be continued from our last meeting to explore if there was any opportunities for the town to work with the State House Foundation and the, the potential, well, the interested party from before. But Mr. Administrator, could you add a little bit to this, or a lot to this?
Yes, sir. I see that Chris Lewis is here at the meeting. Chris Lewis is on the board at the Bristol State House Foundation. We had a number of communications. at the Bristol State House Foundation. We had a number of communications between Bristol State House Foundation and Heritage Hall of Fame. That's what we had talked about during one of the past meetings, the potential that Heritage Hall of Fame would move to the State House Foundation. It doesn't appear that they were able to strike a an agreement and a lease that both groups would be pleased with. So we're back to they're back to looking for a tenant. And so what we have here is a one-year lease extension. It's for the same amount that we've been paying for the last several years, which is fifty five hundred dollars a year, and that permits us to use the courtroom on the second floor. We have preferential treat preferential reservation use if we give them thirty day notice and writing for the courtroom and to continue to use the the property, the exterior of the building. The only other addition here, and it's a little over three thousand dollars a year, it would be the insurance, the property, the property insurance on the building. We had a liability waiver for the exterior for injuries, but now part of this agreement would be that we would provide property insurance in the event of property loss of the of the building. So it's a one one-year lease. I know they're working to get tenants in long term. So Chris Lewis is here. If you have any other questions about the lease, the lease was delivered to Chris and went back to me a couple of times, and this is what what I'm recommending at this time.
So Chris, did you want to add anything to it? And if you do, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, it's Chris Lewis. I'm at eighty seven Highland Road. And I think we just heard basically what we're asking for. So no, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Chris. What's this council's pleasure?
I'll just move. This is Mary. I'll just move that we extend the lease for one year as recommended by the administrator.
Tony, second.
So Mary made the motion to approve as recommended by the administrator, and Tony seconded. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. I just had a quick question for Chris.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion. I apologize. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question for Chris. Just wanted to understand the overall long-term strategy that they have in mind for this State House.
Sure. Like Steve Contenti just said, we are actively pursuing one or two leases for the downstairs. It could be one tenant or two. But we still want to keep the upstairs available to not only the town, but any groups within the town that want to use it. It's been some time since we've had regular usage up there, but I think that, well, y'all know, I mean, it's great potential, great space, and it'd be great to continue to see groups use it. But we, for cash flow reasons, we need to rent out the other first, the two units on the first floor.
Thank you.
Was there any other discussion?
Well, could I just ask, do you have a so I'm not, I know that we had hopes that the Heritage Hall of Fame would work out. Is there, do you have other prospects in mind that you're discussing this with to rent out that space?
No, I mean, we've talked about a CPA firm, an attorney, architect, you know, something like that, that they would value that space. And, you know, whether or not we'll be able to get the the Hall of Fame group back to the table remains to be seen. I mean, I was actually, I was in touch with a couple of board members today about a proposal to get them back to the table to see if we could do a long-term lease with them. So I'm I'm not shutting the door on that just yet. But if we aren't able to do that, then we're going to have to find some other tenant or tenants for that space.
Was there anything else? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim? We had a motion. I'm sorry. Let me let me restate that. We had a motion and a second to approve the lease recommended by the administrator. Tim?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
The the next item is also from the administrator regarding the fifth renewed declaration of state of emergency, and this is presented for council consent.
Mr. Administrator, did you want to add anything here? I know we have that document in front of us. Was there anything that you wanted to add?
Not at this time, no. Thank you.
Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. Is the proper motion to approve?
I.
It would be to consent.
Ratify?
Yeah, motion to consent.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tim to consent, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item I two, also from the administrator, this is a his executive order twenty dash zero eight, and this is to defer the payment of a certain doc fees. This is also presented for council consent.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, I have no problem at all with deferring the payment of the of the docs, the doc fees, I should say. As I see it, we're looking at to defer this to the end of June, if I read it correctly. So I have no issue with that. I think it's fair to give an opportunity for the board owners to take care of business.
I agree. I agree. It's a tough time right now, and and any help that we can give that is not detrimental to the town is most appropriate. Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, that was brought to our attention actually by a commercial fisherman that called and asked that we would consider just the deferral, not a waiver, deferral to June thirtieth. The restaurants are not buying the product, and the resident was not coming in with a commercial fisherman. So that would that would help.
And I I I myself, I'm certainly happy to do so. So what's this council's pleasure? So actually, I take that back. Tony, you made the motion to approve. Was there a second?
Yes, I think I seconded.
Tony made the motion and Mary seconded it for approvals. Are there any discussion? Tim?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is item I three. The council will recall that there was a a certain process that was put before the council for determining no parking space requests. This is something that the police department put forward, and I was asked to put it on this agenda for formal adoption of that process, which includes the the practical activity on the part of the police department, followed up with a video.
So I'd like to start off. I did. The administrator and I reached out and spoke with the chief yesterday in regards to this. I also called the solicitor today to just confirm a couple of things. On the top, I love the new process. I love the video. I love it's it's a, you know, three turns to get out is the kind of a pass fail on it. It's a nice repeatable process. I like that very much. So hats off to you, chief. I think it's a that part of it I really, really like. And it sounds like I'm getting to a part I don't like. It's not that. It's that this process for no parking would require the council to pass an ordinance, right? There's got to be an ordinance like we were talking about earlier. So it that part of that process, I don't know. We certainly can't adopt that part of it, but I I absolutely am in favor of the first part. And what I think, and I'm not cutting discussion here, but what I'd love to do here is maybe refer this back to the administrator, chief, and solicitor to kind of tweak this a little bit in a way that we can adopt this policy if if necessary for us to come back to us. But that part of it, the first part, and justifying, verifying, I love it. So I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
I was just gonna say that I really think that it's nice to have like a process, official process, and have the standards laid out so people coming in know what it what it is, what the problems are. Such limited parking in some parts of town that is very possible that you end up with the street with no parking because of this issue. And I think the process of how hard it is and actually trying it, I think, goes a long way and probably would eliminate some of the requests even coming in. So I think that that is a good thing, and I'm happy that you were able to work on that, chief.
Tim?
I'm a huge fan of the videos, chief. Seeing is believing, especially in the last two instances, seeing the cars and seeing how they backed down and pulled in, really took out the gray areas for me. So I really enjoy that process. But I agree, we have to, we have to make an ordinance. So so I'm happy to make a motion to refer this back to the solicitor to kind of tweak the process and to create the ordinance or, you know, tweak the process on this.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, the Mr. Solicitor, is that is that an appropriate next step there? And certainly, chief, I'd love to hear from you, of course.
It it'll most likely be adoption of a policy as opposed to an ordinance. But I think we I'll work with the chief and with the administrator. We'll we'll get it down and come back to you with it for your consideration.
Hey, Mike. Anything you wanted to add, chief?
I know. It's just my goal to lean out the process and, you know, to provide, you know, better outcomes for the residents and make sure that, you know, that, you know, we had a process that, you know, is is working well in another community with historical and university type settings. So I think I think we're on to something. And not to get off topic, I'm also working on, the same city has a very good process to deal with college houses and how the police deal with follow-ups and calling the kids into the station and giving them a tutorial on the ordinance. So I'm working on additional outcomes for other issues that the council has to deal with as well. So.
Well, chief, you've already found success with one of those two from last week, right? Is the request for no parking, you found resolution, which was outstanding. And honestly, the resident was looking for resolution and and it was found. So.
Yes, both both people. So while they were denied, we did find a resolution to the problem. So and that's what it's all about too at times, you know. Sometimes it just takes a little intervention and working out what the issue is in the neighborhood too and communicating with everybody, you know, produces the intended goal. So.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? If not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tony?
Tony?
Actually, I wish he was here and had the process in place when we were dealing with Milk Street and Bourne Street. I had to use my van and do exactly what he did on those videos. So it's interesting that, you know, to see that application.
Excellent. Anything else? So the motion, if everyone's comfortable with it, would be to refer to the solicitor, the administrator, and the chief to craft a policy that we could adopt. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Okay, so Tim made the motion, Mary made the second to refer to. I won't go through all of that again. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion is adopted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to know if Tony, is your van still available for these videos?
I'll pass on. Now let I let the town vehicles do the operation.
The the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is item I four, also from the town administrator. This is the executive order regarding the expansion of restaurant service area, also presented for council consent.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. Motion to consent.
Second.
Tim made the motion to consent. Mary seconded it. Discussion, if you.
Tony.
Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I'm glad to see the word temporary inserted in quite a few of these areas. Obviously, we more than willing to work with our business, definitely look forward to it. However, you know, certainly, this is a temporary arrangement. So appreciate to see that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Well, I just wanted to.
I was gonna add something, but you first, Mary. No, go ahead.
Okay, that's good. I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to everyone that's been working on all of this. You know, I think we've all been thinking about what public spaces the restaurants can go into if they needed to, to make sure that they have the spacing. I mean, we rely on on them. We rely on the tax revenue that comes in. And also, you know, it's something in Rhode Island in general, and certainly in Bristol and East Bay, like known for our restaurants, and you don't want to see people lose their businesses over something that is out of everybody's hands. So I think it's great that we were able to step up and to be as accommodating as possible. So I really appreciate the administrator and the staff and Chris and everybody who's working on a daily basis on this to make sure that we can help in whatever way and help them move forward and not be obstacles, which government can sometimes be.
It was well put. And an example of success with this, if you go down State Street right now, you will see that Beans, Zach's Place, has taken advantage, went through the process, has the concrete blocks delivered by DPW, and then he added to that to keep it safe over there. And he's taking advantage of it right now. So the system will work. It what it does is it expedites things. And I know that we all are very much focused on taking care of our businesses and making sure this happens right away. One of the key parts we're also all very concerned about is that it's done correctly, right? And that it's also, we're not circumventing rules that we ourselves put in place because we know they're correct. But in the time that we're in right now, the administrator and I talked about this, and and he was hyper focused on making sure that this happened expeditiously. And I think we found success with Zach, and I happen to be talking with Zach today on State Street, along with a few other business owners. And I told him what I'll tell, what we're all telling everybody is that this council, the administrator, and truly the town is very focused on helping. And if there's a solution and a way that we can do it, then gosh darn it, we're gonna do it. So again, I think it was well put, but hats off, Mr. Administrator and all staff, Chris, because you're on the call, of of doing what you're doing. Side note on that, the a couple of business owners said to me that getting the application, they knew you have to click on COVID and go here and there. If we could make that more forefront, meaning maybe on the splash screen, maybe on if you click on COVID, it's right there, something like that, but just to take a couple of steps out of it and make it easier and quicker to find. That was feedback that I'd gotten today.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, may I just say one other quick thing? And that is for Chris and for Steve. I mean, I think this is going to go a long way, but I think the restaurants are going to rely still on curbside and on takeout. And I just want to make sure that we can figure out a way as some of the parking spaces are moved so they can put tables, that people could come up quickly and get their curbside takeout and not have to find parking three or four blocks away, whatever. So just ask that you take that into consideration. I think it could easily be done if if people call ahead and they, you know, can make sure this stuff can be run out quickly, even though we have, I haven't seen what Roy Beans has done yet, but it was kind of an idea that I was thinking about on on State Street in particular, because so many restaurants close by, that just to keep that in mind, because that's going to be, I would imagine, still a pretty large part of their business, at least through phase one and phase two.
Thank you.
Good point.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, we had a motion from Tim, seconded from Mary to approve. Tim?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
I also vote I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. Item I five is a request for executive session, which we'll be taking up at the conclusion of the public agenda. The next item is bid nine twenty eight. This is for the road resurfacing project. We have seven submissions. The first is from Cardy Corporation of Warwick in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. The second is from J. H. Lynch and Sons of Cumberland in the amount of three million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The third is from The third is from T. Mioti Incorporated of North Kingstown, Rhode Island, in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and, excuse me, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. The fourth is from PJ Keating Company of Lunenburg, Massachusetts, in the amount of two million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. The fifth is Narragansett Improvement Company of Providence in the amount of one million, nine hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The sixth is Deambra Construction Company Incorporated of Coventry in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And the final is Pawtucket Hot Mix Asphalt Incorporated, obviously of Pawtucket, in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, Tim, make a motion to refer the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion to refer to the administrator. Tony, seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Sorry, I just had a question for the administrator in regards to the listed streets that this project would fall under. Is that still being formulated or?
Of, it was published in the Phoenix with the advertisement for the bid. It's approximately, off the top of my head, I'd say about twenty roads, but it was published. I don't have it handy.
That's okay. I just was curious if I could, I see it. I clearly didn't see that.
Yeah.
I will forward the list to you.
It's in the notice. I think, isn't it in the notice?
It is in the notice, yes. It's part of the packet.
Yeah.
Yep. And you know what, Tim, if you want to just, we'll take a second here since you brought it up. It was San Juan and St. Anna, Birchwood, Smith, just north of Lisa Lane, Jessica, Kathy Court, Paul Street, Dartmouth Terrace, Brookwood, Clifton, Graylock, Loring, Curtis. I feel like it's, wow, holy goodness, Beechmont, Fenmore Beach, Wales, Arthur, Massasoit, Marshall, Tupelo, Broad Common, and Naomi was what was listed on there.
I've got it. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
No, that was, and I did that because I thought your request was appropriate to read aloud for the public, so.
Excellent.
So Tim made the motion, and if I had that right, and Tony seconded. Is there any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, this is item J two, and this is for bid nine twenty-nine. This is for streetlight maintenance and insulation service. You have three bids received. The first is from Prism Streetlights in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. The second is from AM Electric LLC of Warwick, and that amount is seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. And the third is Arden Engineering, a construction LLC of Pawtucket in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Chairman, Tim, make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Tim made the motion to refer to the administrator, Mary seconded. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is item J three, and this is from the administrator regarding special appropriation of unassigned general fund balance for expenses relating to the COVID-19 emergency.
Mr. Chairman.
Tony, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve it with the anticipation we'll be submitting this for reimbursement.
Second. Tim?
Tony made the motion, Tim seconded that motion to approve. Mr. Administrator, could you take a moment with us and, as importantly, the public to share this request and what it is? I know the council has all the information, but I'd love to have the public here.
Certainly. So there've been expenses accruing relating to our response to the emergency in just, in general, what they include are staffing for the food preparation. We're still doing over a hundred meals a day. That'll continue right to Labor Day. So we got an extension, the meals are free, but we do have somebody that is there on site preparing them. And you may say, well, that's happening at recreation. I was gonna get into this a little bit further, but we are planning to run a summer camp this year, so we are, recreation is gonna stop focusing on the summer camp. So what I'm trying to say is the expense there is probably not gonna be reduced as soon as we anticipated. Other expenses have been the improvements to Town Hall for the safety and security of the employees. Also, the laptops, when the pandemic first broke, we were concerned about closing Town Hall, keeping continuity of operations. So we purchased twenty-five laptops. They were used, they were used by our collectors, by payroll, by our department heads. So it was an investment. Majority of those have been taken back and are here back in inventory, but they're on hand, they're good machines, and if we need to use them again, we can do that. The FOB system, which there is a request right now, it's about fifteen thousand dollars of that eighty-five. That's to include our other departments, for example, highway department, to use the IDs like I'm wearing now. It's a FOB access, and I think you did all get an email to get your IDs made with FOB access to Town Hall. You can do that up at Fire Headquarters. So that's where we're at with eighty-five thousand. Right now, we're taking our expenses out of our operating budget. And I did speak to the finance director on how we could do this. In some of the departments, like the fire department, we would have run over budget. So we were asking for a fund balance appropriation. We have applied for the FEMA disaster relief money. The application is in, but as you recall, during our last disasters, it takes about six months to get the money back. We've seen some relief from Health and Human Services, about twenty-two thousand dollars. We do have that money in hand, but that money has to be directly used towards mainly EMS costs, which have been incurred. And so again, some money has come in already, but because we're at the end of our fiscal year and our operating budgets are getting really, the unencumbered money is getting really slim. We're asking for this fund balance appropriation, so.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so we had a motion by Tim to approve, and Mary seconded it. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is the periodic report that's provided to the council from Alan Klepper, Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Chairman, I make a motion to receive and file. Tim?
Tony, second.
Tim made the motion to receive and file, Tony made the second. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And now we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So I'm gonna take just a few minutes and hit a couple of things. First one is with the challenges that we're having, and I know we're all gonna probably hit a couple of things here, but I'd like to talk about schools for a moment. I am concerned or that their, at their last meeting, there's been no discussion as of yet that I'm aware of that talks about how they're going to deal with the savings that they're seeing. Now, obviously, no one expected this, no one wanted to see this kind of savings, but savings is being realized, millions of dollars. So I think it's appropriate that the council and then probably through the joint finance committee, maybe we have a, we're actually coming up on that quarterly meeting we said we wanted to do, to talk about that with them, to talk about how they plan on applying those savings towards next year's budget. We've all talked about wanting, and as we did, approve the budget as requested. And I won't go into, obviously, the caveat there was they had asked for monies they didn't need and adjusted it accordingly. That being said, I think we need to have some clear dialogue with the school committee and the superintendent. I know the superintendent is in Maryland, is not back yet, but I'm sure we can figure out a way that we can have these discussions, whether it's in a Zoom meeting like this or otherwise. But it's something that we do need to talk about. We, this council, and ultimately through the joint finance, approved the budget. So, you know, talking about what's gonna happen with teachers next year, I mean, we're fully funding. There shouldn't be any adjustments there. Now, we, the town, the school, don't know what's gonna happen with the state budget, of course. So there's gotta be conversations and contingency plans, but I'm interested to know where the millions are going to be applied. I don't want, personally, I don't want a new initiative started with those funds because that new initiative, of course, is gonna cost more money. I'm not against new initiatives, and please don't take that the wrong way. I am suggesting that any large new initiative would be difficult to fund, especially in these times. So offsetting next year's budget, what's going on with those monies? How are we gonna handle it? Talking with the superintendent and the school committee. I know that, talking with our finance director, Raquel, that the part of, they have to commit to what they're gonna use for fund balance by the end of June. Raquel, am I correct with the end of June on that?
Yes, you are. Most municipalities and schools have to report out their fund balance by June.
Okay, thank you. So that's an important point, too. So there's a lot of money out there, a lot of money that no one wanted out there, but yet it's out there. So we need to have some open and clear dialogue about what's gonna happen for next year. And we said we wanted to do this anyway, as, coming from the joint finance, but as this council. Next one was the House and Senate. We don't typically talk about state here and local and the things. I'm gonna share a little frustration for a moment. I'm frustrated that the House and Senate hasn't met in any true way, and I can see Mary smiling on that one. What is going on? You know what, I believe there should be one voice from the governor. I believe there should be one voice, right? But I also believe the House and Senate is supposed to be that other part, not the balance, but a way that our voice is heard up there. And I don't agree with everything the governor's done. Well, stop, I don't. But I do believe she's done an excellent job in a difficult situation. But I want our House and Senate to be speaking for us. The one point two billion dollars that's coming from the federal government, how is that gonna be spent? Where is that going? How does that get to us? How do we get money back to get to our communities, to our businesses, to our schools that we were just talking about? I don't speak of just our reps and our senators. I'm not pointing at them. I'm talking about the bodies. They need to get together. They need to be that other voice so the governor can hear from us through them. And that's what's supposed to be, a balance there. The administrator mentioned college houses. I've had a few residents, maybe you have too, reach out over the last probably six months or so, particularly down on King Philip, and there's been some issues down there. I have reached out to the solicitor, and he is looking into ways, his office is looking into ways, that we can currently use what we have on our plate, our ordinances that are in place already to deal with some of the issues there. There's no issues at the moment because who knows what's going on with the colleges, which leads me to the next one. We do need to have some conversations with the university to find out, is there something, what's going on with them? How can the town help them? You know, is there systems or something that we can do? Because they represent thousands of employees. They represent a lot of money that comes to our businesses, to our residents who rent out properties. So these dialogues are not lost on any of us, but I wanted to say that at the end, if I sounded a little frustrated with state government, I am. And I think you are too, in maybe different ways than I am, but I am so frustrated that there isn't, there isn't that voice for us directly. I didn't say we're not being represented. I'm saying that those voices, those advocates for the people of Bristol particularly, it's important that they have that voice. So that's all I had for this evening. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Chairman, you bring up a lot of good points, and I think, you know, maybe we should seek out our state reps and senators and have a meeting with them to make sure that they are really going up to the State House and fighting on our behalf to make sure that, you know, we are hitting the funds that we need to make sure our community stays intact. You know, helping to save Bristol's economy is really on my mind. I think it's on all of your minds. The fact is, thirty-six million Americans are unemployed right now. We're losing jobs, businesses and possible universities are going under. The state really faces a major shortfall, and in the coming budget and the next budget coming, they're gonna have a major shortfall. So putting all that together, I'm reimagining the COVID Economic Development Commission, maybe in some way, and I'm not putting this on an agenda item tonight, just something for you guys to think about. Maybe bringing them back as sort of an ad hoc group of maybe ten people, maybe help Chris Bytenley and Diane Williamson put together some sort of strategy to help our struggling economy. And I know the town administrator is working hard on that. I think we need to understand what the inventory is for open stores, and also we need to understand what empty storefronts do we have, what real estate is out there. I think we also need to have a good understanding of the landlords. And I don't know, and maybe you guys know, and you can help fill me in after this meeting, but what their ultimate strategy is for filling these empty storefronts. So with all that put, with all that said, I really hope we can maybe have a small group get together to try to work towards putting Bristol back in their economy moving forward in this new COVID world. I also think Amazon drop-off and pickup centers should be more readily available moving to the online economy and also helping our small businesses adapt to the online economy, which is, you know, quickly coming down the pike. To that end, I know Rep. Donovan and Rep. Speakman will be hosting a small business discussion with Congressman Cicilline and the Rhode Island Department of Business Regulation, the director, Liz Tanner. It will be available on my Facebook. I'll put it out there, because I know you guys are all concerned about the economy. And you can just reach out to me personally. I'll try to get that information to you. But I think it's something seriously we have to address. It's big, it's coming down the road, and we are the visionaries in the town, and we need to be thinking, we need to be one step ahead of it. This coming weekend's Memorial Day weekend, I usually get to walk with you guys. We usually have the test run Fourth of July, but that's not gonna happen, so I miss that. I wish everybody a safe and healthy Memorial Day weekend, and please take a moment to just remember those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. I think it's really important, just a moment. And that's all I had. Have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Texira? Oh, I'm glad that you mentioned that, Tim, about the Memorial Day, you know, because it is a time that we should not forget, you know, even though we will not be out there to actively be able to memorialize that day, but certainly. To the chairman's point, let me tell you, we actually in a better position in the sense that we're able to decide an hour budget. Unfortunately, on the other literal world where I work, it's been very frustrating, and not just for seventeen communities throughout the state, and the administrator can attest to that, the two conference days, I mean, the two teleconferences that we listen to daily, you can sense the frustration. And yesterday, it came to a hat, actually, at one of the conferences, unfortunately. But it is very frustrating not to have some activity at the legislative level. It is very frustrating. We've stated this over and over, especially the communities that have to hold financial town meetings. At this point, we know you cannot have more than five people, eleven to mine, you know, trying to get a hundred to a hundred and fifty people, you know, together to decide a budget. So at this point, everybody is on hold with that. And it's very unfair, because we've requested some action on the administration. So at this point, everybody is on hold with that, and it's very unfair because we've requested some action on the adminis- from the governor, and it has not happened. And I somewhat understand where she's coming from, because we do have a, a body that needs to be active and should be responsive to the, to the communities that are need that support. But I'll stop on that one there, but it is very frustrating. So I, I fully understand where you're coming from and very little to no response at all when attempts have been made to contact some of these folks. But I'm sure they're not going to forget November is the election, election month. But anyway, to that point, also this week is EMS week. So a big thank you goes out to first responders and all the, the folks on EMS service. So, you know, if you see one of those out there, let's reach out and say thank you to them. So with that, have a safe and, and make the best of the Memorial Day. Thank you.
Ms. Pirella?
Well, thank you. Um, yes, I want to just also agree with much of what's been said, particularly as it hits our local economy, which is not just going to be this year, it will be going forward, particularly, you know, reliance on, you know, our food and beverage taxes, things like that, which were a significant portion for us. And that, that's going to be down, is down this year, and it will be done, I imagine considerably next year. Especially if we continue in this situation. I think when I hear, you know, people, people comment, like Tony's comment, it just makes me all the mo- more grateful that we all can work together and that we have our, you know, we, we pretty much didn't miss a beat. We've had our meetings, like, we had our regular meetings, we've had hybrid meetings with the schools. We've had these Zoom meetings and doing, we're all doing the best we can. Everything's a work in progress, as I say at my job. But we're all learning quickly and we're all doing what we need to do to make sure our community is as safe as can be and is it is as healthy can be financially. I mean, it's difficult, but we're trying to do what we can do and be as proactive as possible. So, you know, it makes us appreciate that all much more, that we, we can control our own destiny, destiny to some degree in comparison to other towns. And I think that that is, we, we find those illustrations over and over again, and this is just another one of them. So thank, thank you to everybody who makes that possible on a daily basis. Again, I want to salute our veterans and everyone on Memorial Day. And also, as things open up and we want people to, to be about in supporting businesses and so forth, we also need people to be careful because we don't want a repeat of this. Like, if these numbers start to go sky high and people go, start having all kinds of parties and not paying attention because the weather's warm and it's nice out, we're going to end up back in, so if some, some version of a lockdown, we'd be very careful that that doesn't happen. So I just want to, you know, say as nice as, as it is weather-wise, that we just want to be very careful out there and try to abide by the social distancing and all the rules that are set up so that we can move forward and hopefully have a vaccine sooner than later and, 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 and just move forward with our economy and our lives.
Mr. Lay?
Just want to say, just to expand a little bit on Councilwoman Pirella's point that we are really in charge of our own destiny right here. And, and one of the things I have to say is that this body is probably one of the least dysfunctional bodies that you'll find in any sort of politics. Like, you can't tell sometimes whether somebody on this council is a Democrat or a Republican because how many times have you heard me say that Councilwoman Pirella has just hit the nail right on the head? Or somebody else has a great point. And at the end of the day, we might disagree with one another, but, you know, we don't let it fester or anything like that. This is just one body right here. It's one Bristol. And I do want to say also that I have on my notes here that Susan Donovan will be holding that meeting that Tim had talked about with Liz Tanner. That's going to be on Friday at ten AM. And so that'll be a Zoom meeting, and Councilman Sweeney said that he'd have that information on his Facebook, and so I plan to be there as well. I also wanted to say something a little bit. We oftentimes talk about our essential workers and everything like that and everything that they're doing for us and how great that is. And, you know, I just want to give a, just another shout out to the, you know, essential workers that are just out there every single day, and especially the ones that are out there helping our seniors. I can think of the Benjamin Church Senior Center, they were out, they've given hundreds of rocks out to seniors, and they're giving out soups to seniors. And they're just doing an outstanding job with that. And the, the rec center, seventy-five to one hundred meals per day, lunches per day that we're making sure that seniors are getting, they're delivering groceries, making sure people have their medications and things like that. I know that Lisa Rayola had something going on with, with the Hope in Maine. And my whole point in saying this is that we oftentimes don't think that when these people are out there delivering lunches and delivering food to people and trying to cheer people up a little bit, it's a tiring thing. And this has been going on for a very long time. And so these people are exhausted. And oftentimes, when they go back home after a hard day's work, they sometimes have to pull a second shift, and they have to be there for their families as well. And so I did, did want to give a little bit of a shout out to them for some of the sacrifices that they've been making during this time. And that's not just the seniors, they're the people that are helping out with the seniors, our police officers, our fire department, and everybody like that. There's just too many to list. Lastly, I, I know that we have Memorial Day coming up. I know graduations are going to be coming up and everything, and I just experienced a graduation at University of Rhode Island where I was not able to watch my master's students cross the stage after spending years with them to collect their diplomas. And one of the things I'll say about that is that there's always some kind of silver lining, and there's always something I think that we can do to make other people's lives better, even during this time. And so I just want to encourage my fellow residents and my constituents out there to take a little bit of time. And, you know, if you can make a short, two to three minute video for somebody who's graduating from high school and say something really nice to them, or, you know, say something that you really like about them, that you remembered about them. I think that that would mean a lot to them, and it's something that they're going to have forever. You could do the same thing for a veteran, somebody who's a wounded warrior, somebody who's living with the battle scars from war for the rest of their lives. If you can do something like that for them, send it to them. It's a video, a short video clip or a social media clip that they're going to have forever. It is so meaningful to them. I spent, I had eleven graduates in my master's program. I made individual videos for them, and every single one of them, I essentially heard back from them. So that's my encouragement to all my constituents. Stay healthy and safe out there, everybody. Thank you.
Town administrator agenda items.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate that we, recreation is working on a summer camp. We're very excited about it. And we're going to run a, a good camp to get the kids out in some fresh air. There'll be limited group sizes and a good number of restrictions. But I think it's something that we all need, and it's going to send a good symbol of our determination and resilience. And I think we all have a right. Bristol is very responsive. Bristol is resilient, and going back to some of the comments I just heard, we do have a good foundation in our economy. Our manufacturing sector kept chugging along. Maritime businesses were still working. And, you know, some of our small businesses, those service oriented businesses, like these Orient butcher shop, the restaurants, classic pizzas, too many to name, all these, all these restaurants that stayed open, served the public. They're hardworking people. We're, I know you're all proud of them. I'm proud of them also. And I, I think we've learned a tremendous lot about small government and how we act quickly when necessary. And I want to thank all of our employees also who took, took to the task to come in and get the job done. And some of those departments are overlooked, the sewer department, compost, DPW, the trash. That automation was started during this pandemic, so remarkable how we adapted quickly. And it was the employees, that's, that's what it was. I say this word all the time, vested employees. That's what we need. We need vested leadership, vested employees that are here, that listen, that know the community. And I think that's why we've adapted to this as well as we have in, I know we'll get through it. Another quick note is Prudence Island Dock, it's paved. We're waiting for the asphalt to cure before we can stripe it. So that's going to be a great asset for additional parking on Theme Street. And I took a walk yesterday. I spoke to several parish priests. They're looking forward to open up. I looked at their social distancing, which is the, the media was there also onsite with me. So I think there'll be a story run this week, so we're looking forward to limited church services. Again, we can certainly use that in town. And we took a stop by the Common. I don't know if you've noticed, there's some work going on with the On Call Electrician and DPW. That's on build financing for some new lights, and tennis courts are open. We did end up opening them yesterday. Tennis courts are open. Common isn't open yet. The tennis courts on the Common aren't open yet. We're putting the new lights in. But ball fields for, you know, families, not organized sports. The playgrounds are still closed, and the basketball courts are closed. But we're, we're adapting prudently and cautiously, but we're moving in the right direction. Thank you for your assistance and support of administration and all of our departments. One last note, I see Chief Lynch's image on my screen. I learned today that he was sworn in as the treasurer of the Police Chiefs Association. Chief Lynch, congratulations. That's all I have. Good night.
So before we go to executive session, which we do have executive session, all of you would have received the special meeting number and the passcode for it. Lou resent that email today at three thirty-six PM. Could you all just confirm with me that you have the information that you can go into executive session? Thumbs up? Everybody good? Okay, excellent. So Mr. Clerk, or actually probably Mr. Solicitor at this point, right? So.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, five, relative to the sale or lease of public property.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Well, now you make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
So Tim made the motion to go into executive session, Mary made the second. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. This meeting that we're in will stay here. Chris Vitale will keep it live. So once we're done with executive session, you're going to log back into this meeting so we can vote out of executive session and then adjourn this meeting, okay? All right, so I thank you all. I thank the, the public and all that was here in our, in our town tonight and taking the time. So we're going to leave this meeting, go into executive session in about two minutes. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.